Any order? Mrs. Burns, roll call please.
Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
Mr. Parentano?
Present.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Mrs. Boyle?
I'm here.
Mr. Feather?
Here.
Mrs. Hallenbach and Mr. Krupitz are absent with present notice. Mr. Marington?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. The Board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, and matters related to litigation. The Nishamney District Mission Statement. The Nishamney community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner. Mrs. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, Superintendent's report.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome back. New school year almost on the horizon here. Our sports teams have been out playing. We've got a lot of work that's been taking place over the course of the summer. Support staff getting us ready both inside and outside, custodial operations. Our transportation department's already been in, had initial meetings, taken some dry runs and make sure we're ready to pick up students as soon as next week. And I do have a small video I thought be worth showing you related to this. And Mr. Stanley is in the back. He's going, it's, oh. Mr. Stanley is in the front row. I thought this, he did a really nice, as, once again, Mr. Stanley did a nice job. And take a look. All across through this happens. Drop off supplies and just make that next day when they're actually reporting, or I guess it's two days from then, on Thursday, a less stressful opportunity, a less stressful experience for them to have a chance to see the room and acquaint themselves. We encourage people to get involved this year with our parent-teacher organizations. They're a great help to each of the schools, all of the schools, all the way up through the high school. There's a nice spin group at the high school that does good work. Please get involved. We encourage volunteering. And there's a new volunteering method for getting approved with your clearances. And there's information in my report for that and their information on the website. We congratulate summer stock. For over 50 years, they've been providing wonderful summer entertainment. And this summer was no different. Our grades two to five students presented Annie Junior during the day. And at night, crazy for you from the high school students, just wonderful performances. And actually, there was a program for younger students as well. A showcase was done for the youngest theater students in our area. And then finally, if you're ready for football, we start this Friday away. And I think our first game is North Penn.
That's Friday.
North Penn. Friday, the 23rd, at North Penn, game time, 7:00 PM. So we are back in operation. Thank you, everybody. Have a great school year.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. That brings us to the public comment period, since we typically get about seven or eight people in the audience. We have a larger group tonight. I'm going to read the rules for the public comment session, okay, section. "All regular and special meetings of the Board shall be open to the public. Since the Board desires to be a good listener and be responsive to the community, persons desiring to address the Board may do so during the time allotted on the agenda and according to established procedures. During the audience portion of each Board meeting, members of the public are invited by the President to speak for or against any proposed proposal on the agenda or any other school concern. At the discretion of the Board President, where members or appropriate administrators may respond to questions from the public. The individual is asked to identify him or herself, the area in which he lives, and occupation. Please limit comments to three minutes and avoid discussing personalities." There's some additional processes and time matters. Speakers will be called to the podium in the following order. Residents and taxpayers of this school district who wish to speak on agenda items; then residents and taxpayers of the school district who wish to speak on non-agenda items. I just want to make a note here that the turf issue and the softball coach are not agenda items tonight, so they're non-agenda items. So anyone speaking on agenda items will approach the podium first. And then others who wish to speak on agenda items. Any additional topic or comment by a non-resident or person who does not pay Nishamney School District tax may be presented to the Board in written form, directed to the Office of the Superintendent, or by email. There will be a one-hour time limit to public comment at the beginning of the meeting. When all those who have registered to speak have been heard, others may speak, time permitting. There will be an additional period for public comment, limited to three minutes per speaker, prior to adjournment of the meeting. Registered speakers who have not spoken will have the opportunity to speak first and use three minutes. They will be counted as first-session speakers. No speaker may speak more than once during each comment period. The Board is very interested in audience comments. The Board will listen to and research, if necessary, all audience comments. Any additional follow-up will occur through district administrators. Should matters presented be of a controversial nature, the Board may refer them to the proper committee or hold them for inclusion on the agenda of a subsequent meeting." Mrs. Burns? You just start, yeah. This is agenda items first, so if it's, if your name's called, if it's regarding the softball coach or the turf issue, just don't come up yet. And we'll see if anyone has signed up for the agenda items first, and then we'll circle back around, okay?
Michelle Gersh?
No.
John Shurno?
No.
Chris Wildy?
No.
Rachel Hughes? Kendi?
Hold on for a second.
Has anyone signed up for agenda items? Let me ask it that way. Let's do it the easy way.
It's their hands.
Is there anybody signed up for agenda items? All right. Come on up. Come on up, brave soul.
Okay. My name is Rich Prairie. I live on Terrace Road. My problem is when you guys have opening day, it's total chaos. I live maybe 100 feet from Twin Oak Drive, and it took me 20 minutes to get up the street when you have opening day. When an emergency would occur up at the school, whether it be ambulance or fire equipment, there's no way that anyone can get up to the street to help the safety of the school and the surrounding area. My proposal is, I went to your other meeting at Middletown Township for the school bus thing. I would suggest that maybe a half an hour, 20 minutes before the first day of opening day ends, you have a motorcycle officer or two bicycle officers. That would be the smallest footprint that wouldn't obstruct the traffic. This is a situation, I've been there for 27 years, and it's just gotten worse and worse. Last year, they wouldn't let the cars park on the grass. It was, you couldn't get up or down the street unless you walked on the sidewalk. That's my issue. I know in Nishamney High School, when they have large events, have police presence. Maybe it would be a good idea that you would do the same when an emergency would occur, whether it's a student at the school or her parents having a seizure. They're not going to make it because they can't get up the street either direction, going up Terrace Road from Twin Oak Drive or coming in from Towns. This is a situation that I think that as the Board, you could address it. And maybe it'd be about an hour time for the police officers to be there just to direct traffic. Thank you.
Anyone else on agenda items? Okay, then.
Okay, Michelle Gersh?
Good evening. My name is Michelle Gersh. I'm from Langhorne, and I'm a payroll specialist. I'm here tonight in support of softball coach Dave Chicoletti. My daughter has played for Nishamney softball for the past three years. I am also the treasurer of the Boosters. I don't understand how a coach of Dave's caliber would not have his contract renewed. To my knowledge, he has received exemplary coaching evaluations at the conclusion of each of his eight seasons. His teams have appeared in the PIAA Final Four three times, including PIAA Runner-Up. He has also led Nishamney softball to a record of 168 and 36, and also six SOL championships. It is my understanding that Dave was not told there was a reason for not being renewed other than they have chosen to go in a different direction. Based on all the facts I have just read, that does not make any sense to me or countless others. It has been brought to my attention that it may be a result of an email complaint about a trip he took to the beach with a few members of the team this summer. I want to make you aware that Coach Chicoletti has reached out to us about that trip prior to going. My understanding is that all 14 returning varsity players were invited, but only seven of them were able to attend. He asked the Boosters if he could use Booster money to buy the players lunch that day. Our team has done numerous bonding activities in the past. Food has always been purchased by the Boosters for such activities. The Boosters agreed that the trip and the lunch was a great bonding activity. I think it is unfair not to give Coach Chicoletti the courteous, Curtis, I'm sorry, the courtesy of sitting down with upper management and telling his side of the story before making a judgment on renewal. It concerns me greatly that an email from a disgruntled parent could potentially lead to a coach not having his contract renewed. It opens the door to a very slippery slope. There's always going to be players and parents not happy with their playing time, the position they play, the role they assume, that they only made JV or they got disciplined for breaking a team rule. This happens on every team, every year. And not renewing a coach because of one or two disgruntled players or parents' email complaints will lead to having zero quality coaches around. I fear that listening to disgruntled parents as opposed to veteran coaches will set a very bad precedent for the future of Nishamney sports. I take great pride in the Nishamney School District. Both of my children have great academic and co-curricular opportunities over the years. I've loved watching the journey that my oldest daughter has been on with the Nishamney softball team and Coach Chicoletti. Her and her teammates have been so excited for this coming season with Coach Chicoletti. They want to finish what they started last year and work as hard as they can to achieve their goal, a winning state championship. In closing, I'm asking that you renew Coach Chicoletti's contract. He's a great coach, and he really wants nothing more but the best for all of his players that he coaches. Let him finish what he started and help guide these athletes toward their goal. Thank you.
John Shurna? John Shurna?
Just talk, hit a button. I'm on? Oh, okay. Thank you. My name's John Shurno. I've been a lifelong resident at Middletown Township. I'm in Nishamney alone. Been active in my community, and I'm a law enforcement officer for over 16 years. My daughter started playing softball at the age of 10. Even before we got into the high school, we'd often talk about what it meant to play for Nishamney, as I would share my time here at Nishamney that I enjoyed so much. I taught at Nishamney. It's loaded with talent, and being good is not good enough. Grades matter. Attitude matters. Work ethic matters, et cetera. When it came time for her to try out for Nishamney softball, Coach Chick did not disappoint my expectations. She made the team, but he pushed her. It was an all sunshine and roses right out the gate. She learned very quickly how hard the competition was. The bond that formed with my daughter and her coach grew into a friendship with my whole family and our wives and our kids. I've gotten to know Coach Dave Chicoletti very well over the past three years. Here's what I know about Coach Dave Chicoletti that many don't. He's a school teacher at Bristol Township, or Bristol Borough, with special ed kids, and he treats every one of those kids like they're his family. I've seen him purchase suits, shoes, clothes, and buy food so kids don't have to go without. There was a student that's so near and dear to Coach Chick's heart. On graduation day, he wasn't there at graduation. He knew exactly where he was and how to go get him, and got the local cop. They went to his house, put a cap and gown on him, and got him to his graduation on time. That's Dave in a nutshell. It's not uncommon for him to be interrupted at my house with a phone call from a player saying, "Coach, I've had a bad day at the play today. Can you, my mom, take me to the field and you meet me and pitch to me?" Out the door he goes. He's very committed to his players. Giving up his time is nothing new. And I believe he does this just because that's who he is. These kids are family to him, and that's always ever been. I believe we need to start respecting and protecting our coaches. After nine winning seasons, no disciplinary actions against him, I believe Coach Dave Chicoletti has earned the right to be heard by a fair and unbiased Board before he's let go. What Coach Chick has done for me and my family can never be repaid, and a thousand thank you's not enough. I have three kids. My wife works outside work. We're very busy. The college had contacted my daughter that she wanted to go to. I couldn't get off of work, neither could my wife, and she asked if Coach Chick could take her. I told her it's probably not a good idea to ask someone to take four to six hours out of their day just to take you there. Like that, my phone rang. Chick was on the phone with me, told me that she has to take this trip. I'll take her. He took her up there, and an offer was made. She got into the college that she wanted to, and I don't believe that would have happened if it wasn't for Coach Chick giving up his time that day. In conclusion, there's 100 stories I can tell you about him and all the good he's done for his school family, the students that he teaches, and the softball family. And I just want to remind you, I've worked in law enforcement for over 16 years, and I have zero issue with my kids going anywhere with him at all. And if rules were broken, then we should address it, but to assume anything else is completely unethical. Thank you.
Chris Wildy?
My name is Christopher Wild. I live in the Fairways on Fairway Drive in Langhorne. I'm president of Collateral Adjustment Corporation. And I was going to speak to Dave and his character, but I feel like a lot of people in this room are going to do that as well, so I'm just going to tell a quick story. I got a phone call about 6:30 on a Sunday morning in the middle of March, when there was 12 inches of snow on the ground. And he asked me what I was doing. And of course, Dave, at 6:30 in the morning, I'm sleeping. Sunday morning, like, you know, what do you mean what I'm doing? Get your snow blower, get up to the field. I was like, you have to be kidding me right now. And we proceeded to work on the field for the next two days, snowblowing the entire field so the girls would be able to come out and practice. That's something you don't see in a coach every day. And it's so easy to throw away a coach. I think it's a lot harder to take the opportunity and the time, instead of figuring out a way to get rid of somebody, figure out a way to keep somebody. You're the duly-elected community representative. This is a community issue. He's been outstanding for the community, and if there's been a violation, I'm confident the Board can investigate it and make a decision and make it a learning experience versus a, you know, punishment. Because the only thing you're going to do is hurt these girls. That's all I have to say.
Rachel Hughes?
Hi. My name is Rachel Hughes. I'm a nurse practitioner. I've lived in Langhorne my whole life. I graduated from Nishamney. My husband graduated from Nishamney. We are, I have three girls, including Grace. My, all my girls go to Nishamney. I'm very proud to say that my girls go to Nishamney. My daughter Grace has Fragile X syndrome, which is an interellectual disability. She's a senior this year, and she reads on a third-grade level. Grace loves people but truly did not have any friends or social circles until she met Coach Chick. All my girls play softball, and Grace wanted to play as well. Her freshman year, I took a chance and emailed Coach Chick. I was told by many people that it may not be possible for her to play on the team, but I took a chance anyway, and he agreed to have her on the team, no questions asked. She became the team manager. This is truly has been a blessing for her and for our entire family. She's a member of a team. She just was sitting with the team. The team loves her and respects her for who she is. This, having Grace on the team was not always easy for Coach Chick or for the girls. There were times she would get upset on the field or have an accident when they were at away games. Her first two years, she could not go to a game without either Scott, who's my husband or myself, present. Now, Coach Chick has given her the confidence to travel without us and be able to behave and be an active member of her team. He shows the girls that everyone is the same no matter, no matter what, and everyone should be treated the same. Coach Chick, everyone should have someone like Coach Chick in their life. He encourages all of us to be better people and to treat everyone the same. I'm asking the school board to hear his side of the stories, story, and please do not make Grace's last year at Nishamney playing softball, please make that goal to be able, for her to be able to participate too. Without Coach Chick being there, she will lose her social circle and the support that he gives her. Thank you.
Kennedy? Kennedy?
Okay. Hi. My name's Kennedy Ruth. I'm one of Coach Chicoletti's players of Nishamney High School. Coach Chicoletti has put such a great impact on me and my team. Okay. As a player, I have always wanted to play for his team. I came in my freshman year not knowing, not knowing anyone or anything. He has created a team that has a bond that is so strong. As a player of Nishamney, losing a coach will hurt our bond. It's losing a part of us. He has made me into the player I am today. He has put so much effort and time, and for us just to lose him truly is heartbreaking. He has so much hope and wants us to get better all the time. And Nishamney would not be the same without him. Thank you.
Asia Bernard?
Hello. My name is Asia Bernard, and I've been playing on the Nishamney softball team for the past three years. It's heartbreaking for me and my teammates, my teammates and I, hearing that our coach's contract may not be renewed. It's extremely hard to put into words the bond that Coach Chick has created with the community and the girls that are part of this team. My freshman year, I was on junior varsity, and I got pulled up to run for our pitcher. At first, I didn't really think anything of it. I just knew my role, and I knew that when our pitcher got on base, I had to run. I had the time of my life being able to be on the varsity team even though I didn't see the field. I couldn't be more thankful for the opportunity Coach Chick had given me in my freshman year. Sophomore year, I tried out again, and I made varsity. I was so excited, but I knew that a very good group of athletes were in that senior class above me. That year, I ran for the pitcher again, and towards the end of the regular season and beginning of playoffs, I started getting the chance to get at bats in the games. The first time Chick told me to grab my helmet and start swinging, I was the happiest I've ever been. All I wanted was to prove to him that I could do it, and I did. It made me realize that Chick believed in me, and if he believed in me, that I could believe in myself. If he didn't think I could do it, I wouldn't have gotten that opportunity. My junior year, I earned a starting spot in right field and the leadoff batter in lineup. The moment I've waited for, for so long, has finally came. I got to be on that field every game with not only my teammates, but my best friends. Chick has been my coach for the past three years, but after knowing him for this long, he's not just a coach to me anymore. He has become a best friend, a second parent, and a family member. The amount of things Chick has done for me goes on and on because my parents cannot be there to do. My parents cannot be there because they were working so hard to provide me with everything I need. He was right there. He's the type of person to drop whatever he's doing to make sure his players are doing well. Without him, I wouldn't be able to follow my dream of playing college softball at Westchester University in next fall. Sometimes, he's the person I go to when I'm having a bad day with travel ball. Or if I wasn't doing well in the field, and he is the only person that would understand. He's always up to help every single girl on that team with anything if they ever need it. He's always willing to give up his time for players, and that's the kind of coach in a Nishamney school should want to run their softball program. He has done nothing wrong to any one of us to be let go and not coach us anymore. Letting go of Coach Chick will be the biggest mistake you could ever make, and you should be begging for coaches like him to get involved with this program. The other seniors and I have been waiting for this moment for three years now. We've all been waiting for our senior season. We know we can go far, and we know we can do great things, but by not renewing Coach Chick's contract, we can't do those things anymore. It doesn't only affect him, but it affects his whole team. By taking the contract away, you're also taking away the one moment that my best friends and I have been waiting for our whole lives. Think about it. Think about waiting so long for something and then having someone take away the biggest part of it. Making this decision is a mistake, and I hope you can realize that. Thank you.
Kylie Gersh?
My name is Kylie Gersh, and I'm going to be a senior on the Nishamney softball team. Just a few days ago, we were informed that our coach's contract would not be renewed. This information really hasn't been sitting well with me. It's made me very upset because I can't imagine playing my senior season without him leading the way. The Nishamney softball isn't just a team. We're a family, and right now, it feels like our family is crumbling because we're losing a member of it, a very important one. This year, I finally became closer with Coach Chick because it's my first year starting on varsity. I came to realize that he has our best interests at heart. He uses his own personal time to help me with my college recruiting process. Without me even asking, he voluntarily sent emails to numerous college coaches on my behalf. With his help, I was able to commit to play Division One softball at Sacred Heart University. He loves his job and the Nishamney softball more than anybody I know. He would do anything and everything for this team, which is why it saddens me that he will not be returning for my senior year. Our whole team is ready for this upcoming season. We're going to be good, really good. We only lost one start at a graduation, and we were all really excited to see what this new season would bring our team. We have all of our family returning in the spring, but now we find out Coach Chick will not be with us. He's what holds our softball family together, and it feels like we're slowly falling apart without him. He's a perfect fit with our team's chemistry, and I feel strongly that no one else would be able to live up to the legacy he's made for himself. Looking back, the trip to the beach probably wasn't the best idea, but Coach Chick was just trying to help us out. If we would have known it could have gotten him into trouble, we never would have asked him. He just wanted to help us, like he always does. We don't think he should lose his coaching job because of it. Please reconsider your decision and let him continue to be our coach. Thank you.
Leanna Jones?
My name is Leanna Jones, and I'll be starting my senior year at Nishamney High School. As team captain, I would like to speak on behalf of the Nishamney softball team. Due to recent events, I think it is very important to share the impact Coach Chick has had on the Nishamney softball players. His leadership and dedication has guided us to numerous SOL titles, as well as an opportunity to play in the state tournament in 2018. Chick spends countless hours on and off the field to help improve our team. He knows what will happen in the game before it even starts. He is the most dedicated coach I have ever had and has a love for Nishamney softball like no other. Having a coach like this is something special. You don't You don't get that with everyone. He gives all players an equal opportunity to earn playing time. Aside from our practices, he sacrifices time away from his family to offer us additional hitting and fielding opportunities. He has assisted us with college recruiting by inviting college coaches to see us play and proofreading our letters. He was very influential in my commitment to play Division One softball at Penn State University. Since freshman year, he has always motivated me and pushed me to be a better player. Team bonding has always been a huge part of Coach Chick's philosophy. He wanted our team to be like a family. He believed that team building events helped bring us closer as a team, which therefore helped encourage collaboration and teamwork. He felt that fun activities would help us see each other in a different light and allow us to connect in a different setting. His philosophy of team bonding is why I arranged for a beach day. I invited the entire team to go to the beach on July 10th. Unfortunately, several girls were not able to attend because they did not have a ride. In order for us to go, one of my teammates reached out to Coach Chick and asked if he would assist us with transportation. He received permission from the parents of the players he was driving before we left. Throughout the day, we enjoyed ourselves as a team. He did not interfere with any of our activities. He was simply a means of transportation for our team. We understand that there is some concern whether or not Coach Chick's contract to coach softball will be renewed. We have a lot of talent coming into this year and we hope we can continue to have Coach Chick's guidance and leadership take us through the 2020 season. I kindly ask you to reconsider employing Coach Chick Aletti for this upcoming softball season. Thank you.
Mark Schubin?
Good evening, Mark Schubin, Langhorne, Sales Executive. Today, I come to you as the Board of Directors, Softball Director for Langhorne Athletic Association. And I, first off, cannot say how impressed I am with these student athletes and you can obviously see the impact that this coach has had by their courage here this evening to get up and to speak their minds. So, great job ladies. First, I, I think, I think what's important here is, this is more about, more than just a coach. This is about somebody who's made a tremendous impact, not just in the student athletes, as players, but as people. And what he's done here in the community is, is beyond reproach, especially getting involved in, in our athletic association and helping us expand recently to seven travel teams, getting more girls involved, getting coaches involved from colleges to come, provide their wisdom to some of our younger girls from 10 all the way up. This is the future Neshamenee group of girls coming out of Langhorne Athletic Association, we hope. So, it's amazing the kind of volunteer work he's done here for us and it's just impressive and I think the board should know about that. I think what's important here also is to think about this whole situation as one that maybe it's time to evaluate the whole person a little bit, understand potentially what he may have done or didn't do, okay? And then address it accordingly with, with him and move forward. That, that's how we do things when you find someone who's really, really good, right? When you find someone who has not broken any rules for the most part, right? I mean, let's be, be clear. And, and we, we address it in accord and, and listen, we've all had situations in this, in the school district where folks have broken bigger rules, right? And, and we've seen what's happened. But at the end of the day, this gentleman hadn't broke anything. So, so let's put in context what he's done for this community, what he continues to do for these incredible student athletes and, and the incredible citizens that he's helping them make out of them. And, and look at this in context of the overall picture, not, not just something in, in a box. And I really hope the board, the administration, will take a serious, serious look at this. We cannot, as a, as a community, as a board, as administration, there's just not many people out there like this. You're not gonna find a replacement that's gonna give the time and the effort that, that he is to this team, to the community. And I just would urge everybody to just reevaluate the decision and, and see if there's another alternative to come out of this in a very positive way. Thank you.
Patty Jackson?
Good evening. My name's Patty Jackson, Langhorne, and I'm a fourth grade teacher. First, I wanted to say to the girls that came up and spoke, yeah, my highest level of respect for you because it takes a lot to get up and, you know, speak your mind in front of adults and, and I really, you know, find that empowering. I also wanted to speak to the impact that they talk about coaches making on the students that are in our district. I think it goes without saying that the time that they invest with our students on a athletic level, but also on a personal level, is a huge impact for students in so many different ways. So, excuse me, with that being said, I wanted to speak to the conditions of the soccer fields. I have a student who plays soccer and would hear from the coach, "You have to come out and see the fields." And I would hear from my son, "Mom, you should come out and see the fields are really hard, hard to play on." So, me thinking as a mom, I'm like, "You're a soccer player, you know? The conditions of the field, you play on grass, you know? How could that affect your play?" So, it wasn't until I actually got out on the field and saw the grass that he played on. I know, I'm pretty sure there's pictures that are gonna come up to follow. I honestly don't know how they play on, how they play at the skill level they play on, first of all, and how they're actually even able to conduct practices based on what I, what I was able to see. The walk that we did as a parent group, huge clumps of crabgrass. So, crabgrass is like a weed. Again, you know, it's grass, you're playing, you fall, you get up, it's good to have the grass. It's actually almost like a net that their cleat will get stuck on. So, student running through that with cleats on, falling, that's an injury. So, I guess my, my point is with the ruts in the field, the large clumps of crabgrass, the uneven spaces on the field, the holes down by the goals on either side is, is a concern. For the safety of the players, number one, and also for the teams that are coming to play. I know last year, there were several teams that actually just refused to play, like they weren't playing on the field, they didn't feel it was safe for their teams, their team to actually be on the field here. So, they left and we had to reschedule and at the end of the season, take a trip and play both of the games. Students have a huge level of pride, playing in high school on their home field, being able to come out of the locker room, hear their names announced, have their friends come out, have their parents and just community building in that way. So, I know that's a huge part of, you know, being a Neshamenee athlete is actually being able to play on your home field. So, I just ask again, like, when they said go out and do a walk on the field, it wasn't until I actually saw it and what they're playing on, heard about it, but until I actually got out there and saw it. I know there were some administrators that came out and did like a walk to check it out and see, but I'm just asking maybe for some creative problem solving, if you could come out, take a look. I don't know if it needs to be rolled, I'm not sure, but thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
James McCourt?
You're welcome. I'm Jim McCourt. I live in Langhorne, lived there my whole life. I'm a high school teacher. I'm here to talk about the conditions of the athletic facilities at Neshamenee High School, not just the soccer fields. I have some notes that I'd just like to read to you. Through some of the research that we've done, we found out that about 80% of school districts within District One, which is where we play the majority of our games, schools have turfed soccer fields. There are four teams using, or I should say, five teams using the soccer fields at Neshamenee High School in the fall. Two boys teams and, or three boys teams and two girls teams. We start in mid-August. The fields get eight hours per day of training or games on them. They dry out very quickly in the summertime and if it, if it rains, those dry conditions, wet, tear up very easily. The field, the JV field right now also retains a lot of water at one end of the field and any sort of significant rain on that field makes that field basically unplayable for anywhere from two to four days, depending on the amount of rain that it receives. The fields have no time to recover, no time to be seeded because in the wintertime, you obviously cannot do that and in the spring, lacrosse plays on those fields as well. And you can't really grow seed in the summer, to be honest. We've had cancellation of games, like Mrs. Jackson just said, last year. A team came to our fields to play us in the stadium and the game was canceled in the stadium because of the conditions of the stadium field. So, it's not, like I said, just the soccer field. There was a football game the night before, there was rain two days before then, football team played on the field. These folks came down, they traveled about an hour and 15 minutes to play us. The coach looked at the field and he said, "We're not gonna play on this field." We took him over to the JV and the varsity fields, said, "Can we play on one of these two fields?" He said, "We're not playing on one of these two fields either." It was an important game for us as far as district seedings go. So, we had to reschedule the game at their field, an hour and 15 minutes away the next weekend, so we had to take both of our teams out there to play the next weekend. It makes for difficult practice conditions when one field is shut down because of the rain. We can't fully use that entire field because of the standing water conditions on that field for an extended period of time. Student athletes at Neshamenee deserve proper playing and training facilities. High-quality teams are being put on the field year after year at Neshamenee, making a name in athletics across the state, just like these softball players, making it to the state semifinals, winning all the league championships they win, the football team does, the soccer teams do, the field hockey team does. Athletics are recognized across the state. Neshamenee High School puts athletics on the map across the state of Pennsylvania since probably the 1950s. If a turf field was to come to Neshamenee, you know, maybe they can be used to bring in revenue from local athletic associations, to rent for practices or games if they needed to. We feel like a turf field at Neshamenee is no longer a want, it's more of a need now because of the current conditions of the field. I have some pictures that I can pass around to you folks. There was also a petition that went around. As of 2:00 today, there have been 1,300 people in the community that signed this petition and I'll give that to you as well. Thank you for your time.
If there's anyone who didn't sign up for the first session and wants to speak now, please approach the podium. Otherwise, there is a second session at the end.
My name's Kevin Heltzel. I am a salesman and lifelong Neshamenee resident. Just to jump on Jim, of course, my son plays lacrosse and soccer for the high school and it is, it's bad. Somebody's gonna get hurt, you guys gotta do something. It's really, really bad and it's embarrassing. You know, go to, go to all these other stadiums and, you know, turf fields and really nice and we'd have crap. I mean, it's crap. And somebody's gonna get hurt. You guys need to do something, please. Thank you. H E L T Z E L.
My name's Frank McSherry. I live in Chan, on Chancery Road in Langhorne. Unlike many of the people here tonight, I'm not a member of the Neshamenee family. As a matter of fact, I'm probably the farthest away from the Neshamenee softball family. However, when I heard that Coach Chick's contract was in jeopardy, I knew what I needed to do. I needed to come up here. We've had some unbelievably fierce battles, to say the least. We haven't had much success the last couple of years against Neshamenee. This year was a little different. But these young ladies right here handled themselves exactly like that. Young ladies, that's a credit to their parents, it's a credit to them, it's a credit to Coach Chick and his staff. I thought I knew Chick pretty well, to be honest with you, until I heard the testimonials here tonight. I might need to be a little nicer to him when I see him on the field after this, but here's what I do know. I know that there are three priorities in his life. His family, the kids he teaches in Bristol Barrow, and these young ladies sitting right here, and the ones that have sat here before them under Coach Chick. I know where his heart is. It is in the right place. Please consider that. By the way, I coach at Pensbury. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Before we go into the agenda? Okay, we'll continue with the meeting. There'll probably be a slight echo in the room now, but we will continue. Okay. Routine matters. I'd like to make a motion to approve items number 2.01, the minutes, 2.02, the treasurer's report, 2.03, check register and procurement card purchases, 2.04, investments, 2.05, exonerations, and 2.06, bids. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Puritano. Comments, questions, observations? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Personnel administrative, Mr. Puritano.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I'd like to make a motion, be it resolved, section, excuse me, appointment, section 3.01, be it resolved that the Neshamenee School Board of Directors hereby approves the appointment of Neil French to the position of Assistant Principal, 10 and 1/2 months at Maple Point, at a salary of $122,000. To be effective, August 21st, 2019.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Comments, questions, observations? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Personnel is certificated. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.01, retirements, resignations, and end of assignments, 4.02, tenure awards, 4.03, leave of absence, 4.04, revised, return some leave, 4.05, appointments, 4.06, co-curricular resignations, 4.07, summer professional development appointments, 4.08, co-curricular appointments, 4.09, ancillary appointments. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Personnel support, since Mrs. Hollenbach's not here, Mr. Puritano graciously offered to read it for us.
You can do it. Section 5, Personnel Support. I'd like to get a motion, section 5.01, retirements, resignation- Section 5.01, Retirements, Resignations, End of Assignments. Section 5.02, Leaves of Absence. Section 5.03, Revised Returns from Leave. Section 5.04, Appointments. Section 5.05, Co-Curricular Resignations. Section 5.06, Co-Curricular Appointments. Section 5.07, Ancillary Appointments. 5.08, Summer School Program Appointments. And 5.09, Summer Work Appointments.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Boyle. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Item #6, Educational Development. Mrs. Boyle?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Section 6.02, Out of District Placement.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Yeah. Item 6.01, Overnight Trips, has been tabled to the next meeting.
Section 7, Business Operations. I'd like to get a motion. Item 7.01, Revised Organizational Chart for 2019-2020. Section 7.02, P.A. Pre-K Counts Partnership Agreement. Section 7.03, Annual Investment Plan. Section 7.04, AASA National Conference on Education. Section 7.05, Middletown Township Police and Lower South Township Police MOUs. And Section 7.06, Contract with the BCIU Number 22 for Food Services.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Anyone have any other board business?
I don't know if this is the proper time, but people that spoke about the soccer field, can we address them to the next posted facilities meeting?
I think they all left. Yeah, so, okay.
We can still make a public announcement.
We can make a public announcement, yeah. Yeah, you could take it.
I don't, I didn't schedule a meeting yet.
Yeah, we didn't schedule a meeting yet. Do we have it scheduled? When is it?
Yeah, we've got them all scheduled out now. They're there. I'm going to find it for you. I've got our June meeting, hold on. Future meetings, committee meetings, facilities, September 18th.
The next facilities committee meeting is September 18th at Tuwank Middle School. It'd be a good place for the field conversation to continue.
Yes, we can discuss the fields at that meeting. We're now up to the second public comment period? Same rules apply? You don't have to raise your hand. Approach the podium, name, occupation.
Andy Warren, Shady Brook Drive, Tully Town Borough Manager. I obviously heard the discussion, and I do not know any of the facts, which makes me right on target to speak to it. But I do know that at some point, y'all are going to have a decision to make. And without knowing the facts, I would offer just the following observation. I have coached high school athletes for 30 years, and in the entire time I was coaching, the highest compliment that I believed our athletes could ever get would be that from an opposing coach or team members. As you make your decision wherever, when you weigh with the facts, I would hope that you would consider that from one who has spent a great deal of his life in athletics. To get a compliment of means to me and our athletes meant a great, great deal. I would hope you'd consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Brings us to Steve's favorite time, board comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. So much fun. First, I want to welcome Mr. Don Irwin, our new financial manager, sitting next to Mr. Jones on his, right there. Don, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. Hope to have a great and productive future here at Neshamani. Mr. Jones rather started the meeting showing the job that our support staff does and getting our buildings ready, and I thought, you know, it was an excellent video, and glad that they were able to get in the building. I know transportation people came in, I think it was two weeks ago or last week, a couple of weeks ago, they came in. So, looking forward to a, you know, a great start to the school year. Welcome back to everybody. I know the kids just can't wait to come back, so, well, and the parents can't wait to, I forget what that's like. So, hoping to have a great and productive school year, and thank you all, and thank everyone that came out and spoke tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, I'd like to welcome everyone back. Looking forward to this year. A couple of things I want to go over, what happened during the summer. I want to thank the group for the summer stock. You know, it's become a family tradition to make the summer stock programs. One thing I still find surprising about it is that I, you know, it came up, I saw it on Facebook three, four, five years ago, I guess, and I thought it would be a good opportunity to bring my niece, nephew, you know, and something to do over the summer. Honestly, did not think I would thoroughly enjoy it because I'm not big on musicals. They knew that. But I have, I'm not saying I'm completely converted, because other than West Side Story, I didn't know any of them. But I've enjoyed every single one. And, you know, I say it this time every year, if you miss it, if you're too busy or something, make it a point, keep your eye out for it next summer, because these kids do a fantastic job. And I say, "It was crazy for you, it was Gershwin." Again, I didn't think, you know, this is something I was going to get into, but it was good. I liked it. Over the summer, I had the opportunity to visit Tech School a number of times in my position on the board as president. And I just wanted to point out our students in Neshamani that were involved as interns. And the SOAR program, I think, does a great job. There are some of the, you know, learning disabled or physically challenged students that worked, the lunches they put on, did a fantastic job, and I just want to note that. The interns, I was given a complete tour of their project going on at the Sustainable Energy Lab. And, you know, being in the petrochemical industry, I'm not sure I'm in favor of it, but it was interesting and eye-opening and enjoyable. And the kids obviously enjoyed their work on it. Especially the one guy working on the groundskeeping, he was named every single plant that he was planning that were native to Pennsylvania. Loved it. And in closing, I just want to again thank the facility staff. Again, I spent a lot of time over at the Tech School, so I got to watch how they were preparing the school. And I know that our staff here does equally as hard work. The polished floors, I've polished a few floors myself. Tough job. So, I want to thank, welcome everybody back, and again, I am looking forward to the school year. Thank you.
Just wanted to welcome everybody back. Please remember, our kids are going to be going back to school. Please take it slow in these school crossings. Make sure you're stopping for our buses. You know, you will get a citation, you will be reported. Please take it slow in our school zones. So, remember, the kids are going to be back out on the street, waiting for the buses and walking to school, so keep that in mind during your morning commute. Also, wanted to congratulate the staff that put on summer stock. I was blown away. Crazy for you, it was called. Amazing, and I'm always amazed that they put together that show in a month's time, what they do. And the pool of talent that we have in our school district is fantastic. So, nice job and congratulations. And I do believe, Tech, we had a number of students that went to the Skills USA National Competition in Kentucky. Didn't we have a first-place winner?
I wasn't, I'm off the, I'm off the Tech board.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll have that information for you guys next time, the results from Skills USA.
Yes, we did. We had a number of places. I know they went.
Yeah. All right. We'll let you know that next time. All right. Welcome back, everybody.
Anyone else? As everyone else said, I'd like to welcome everyone back for a new school year. I'm actually looking forward to it. I have a child in elementary this year, a child in middle school, and a child in high school. So, it should be a really fun year, so, looking forward to it. So, if no one has anything else, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second? Second by Mr. Allen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.